I'm opening the Granby Planning Board meeting. It's January 23rd, 2022. First order of business is to review minutes. The latest minutes is for August 22nd. We do not have a full quorum that was present at that meeting, so we'll put that aside for now. The next set of minutes is for September 12th. Has everybody had a chance to review these minutes prior to tonight?
Yes, I have. I make a motion to approve September 12th, 2022 minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next set of minutes, September 19th. Has everybody had a chance to review these prior to tonight?
Under new business, we just approved A and R for 54R Ferry Hill is also listed on the September 19th minutes. Need is on her way. And also the A and R for Alan Katalwitz.
Is it the same lot? Because he was in here twice, wasn't he?
Yeah.
I think it may be two different lots.
Oh, okay. Now, the A and R for Alan Katalwitz, we weren't able to take action on because I had to recuse myself and there were only three of us at the meeting. So Mr. Katalwitz had to come back September 19th.
Okay.
So the only hang up is the A and R for 54R Ferry Hill. I'll just ask Kim to correct the date, I guess, right?
I believe that was on the 12th, not the 19th, right?
I don't know. I'm looking at the 19th here and it's on that one as well.
Right.
I don't know when, you know, what week of part I don't remember, which is when we did it.
Well, Kim, let's table it. I don't want to deal with it until he clarifies why there's a duplication.
There's a copy here, Ralph, for Neil.
I've got a memo here from Kathy Letterman, Select Board's office, asking for our annual report to be compiled and delivered to the Select Board by the 17th of February. Yeah, we can ask Kim to compile. Basically, it's an accumulation of what was before us in 2022, the highlights and so forth. I'll have him pull that together for us. Okay, we have a...
Is anybody here for new business?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, is anybody here for new business before the hearing?
Is everybody here for the hearing tonight?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recess.
Well, hang on. We've got an invoice here from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the amount of $2,340.80 for services rendered How much was it, please? From July 1st through September 30th, 2022, for $2,340.80.
I'll make a motion to approve payment for invoice number one from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission dated December 2nd, 2022, for the total amount due, $2,340.80.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
It's the hearing.
I'll put this in here. If anybody's available, drop... Kathy's not coming in, so she's working from home. So if someone's available to drop this off tomorrow?
I'd be honest. Yeah, I'll do that.
If you don't mind.
Folks, would you sign in, please?
Okay, I want to adjourn from my regular scheduled meeting.
I'll make a motion to recess until 5:15, start of our... Oh, you don't want to start the public hearing, huh?
No, but I want to adjourn. I want to adjourn from my regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
I'll second.
You have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need it.
Sure.
I don't want to leave once all along, but is she coming too or no?
Hmm?
I don't want to leave all along.
I don't want... What's that? She didn't... I wonder if Melissa was coming. She never spoke about her.
Iris, will you sign in, please?
We've already adjourned the regular meeting. And now we'll just have the public hearing. When that's over, we're done. What's that?
I like the chair. Come up afterwards. Okay, it's 5:15. I'm opening the Granby Planning Board meeting for a hearing January 23rd, 2023. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11, the Granby Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 23rd, 2023, at 5:15 PM at One Library Lane, Old Carnegie Library, top floor, Granby, Mass. The nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of Kim's Pet Resort LLC applicant, TNA Associates and Properties LLC owner, seeking special permit and site plan approval under Section 6.2 and 6.3 of the Granby zoning bylaws applicable to Section 3, Regulations 3.5.3, services regarding a proposed pet care, pet-related service business at 220 West State Street and known as Assessor's Map 8B-B-1 in the town of Granby, Mass. So the way this will work tonight, for those that aren't familiar, we're gonna ask the applicant to present. The board will discuss. We'll open it up to public comments and then the board will take it from... at that point. So if the applicant would present...
State your name and address.
Yes, state your name and... Yes, once we call on you, state your name and address when we get to the public comment piece. But until then, if the applicant wants to present to us what they're proposing.
No, you can come up here if you like.
Help you?
Or whatever.
Wherever you feel comfortable.
All right. Kim Goldsmith. I live at 239 Village Street in Granby, Mass, proposing to open up a pet business on 220 West State Street. I currently have a grooming shop in town now, not far from this location, at 181 West State Street. I'm hoping at some point to move the grooming shop business to this location, maybe have like some pet washing stations for people to come and wash their own pets, possibly some doggy daycare, possibly keep some cats overnight if they have fleas in their home and need to treat their house while I have the cats. Maybe sell some supplies, some grooming brushes and things like that to customers that need them to take care of their pets at home. But basically, what I'm doing now, just a little bit extra. It has a lot more room than where I am now.
Has everybody had a chance to review the site plan?
I did.
Did they look at it before?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is 202 corridor. This is the front of the building. This is the back.
I mean, we're not looking to change the building at all. I'm not putting up fencing or anything like that. Basically, the way it looks from the outside is the way it's gonna stay.
Okay.
And there's like eight parking spaces, they put?
Yeah, I'm seeing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 parking spaces and a handicap. Seven plus one handicap.
Does it depend on how much end analysis is gonna be?
Does anybody have any questions from the board? How many stations, how many sta... Like, this is for pet care. So how many stations do you... How many technicians? How many do you anticipate?
For grooming, we... Right now, where I am, we have three tables and a bathtub. So we have somebody able to wash in the tub. We have two people that clip the dogs and then we have one person that has a table that dries them.
So there's one washing station and...
And three tables.
Oops. How much parking did you say you...
On 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Seven parking and one handicap, so... Now, you have the handicap. I'm not familiar with the building. Does the building have a ramp?
Yeah, we put one in after we had come to a meeting and you said that we would need one. So there is a handicap ramp there already. And we did the lighting that you had asked for.
Now, what are you requesting for hours of operation and days?
Right now, we're Monday through Saturday. We are 9 to 5. I was hoping to change it a little bit to like maybe 8 to 6, just to give people more time before work and after work. When I first asked for the hours, I was just opening a long time ago and now, after doing this for so long, I realize that it would be a little bit easier if we could do before work and after work.
So what is done with waste? You know, anything, you know...
As far as dog waste?
Yes.
We pick it up in trash bags and put it in a dumpster.
Will that be on a daily basis?
With the dog waste?
Yes.
Well, that's as if somebody is, you know, walking a dog and it goes to the bathroom. You have little doggy bags on you and you pick it up and the dog... And yes, and then you put it in a trash can and throw the trash in the dumpster.
Did we get any feedback from the...
Board of Health had no issue. I think it's a lot of... Wait there, maybe where your hand is.
Okay, does the board have any other questions they may want to ask at this time?
Should we let Ms. Goldsmith see the...
Well, we will in a minute. I just... I want to know if the board has any more questions at this time.
Not at this time.
No. All right. So with that being said, the... The Board of... The Board of Health said they had no... They took no issue with it. Let's see if we got any other feedback from any of the other departments. I think that's the only feedback we got. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public, a butters, the public, and if you state your name and address and address the board.
Nick Robinson, 114 Pleasant Street. I'm just here to support local businesses and I'm sure the applicant will do a great job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, my name is Sarah. I'm at Bubain City, just because I have some pain issues. But I am Sarah. I live at 16 Parrish Hill Road, which is the house directly behind 220 West State Street. I wasn't really made aware of this whole project until really late in the game. For some reason, I wasn't getting any of the letters or the public hearing notices, but glad I found out about it. I am... My wife and I, both of the houses are opposed to the granting of the permit for a number of reasons. First of all, the business owner stated that she plans to board animals there. So to me, it just seems pretty straightforward that it should be catted, a place of boarding animals in the bylaws. I know that, I guess, the board made a decision that this would be called a services use, but I take issue with that, especially because the impact that it's gonna have on the surrounding area seems more aligned with the impact that a place of boarding animals would have. A dumpster full of dog waste, the traffic that would necessitate nine parking spots. There's a couple of issues with the site plan. The entire west border of the parcel is indicated as pavement in the site plan, but the reality is that there's actually a lot of grass there and a tree there. So from... I mean, I look out the window at that building every day. It's right up my front yard. So it seems to me like the proposed locations of the parking spots would block any access to the business from 202, which would force all the business traffic to come around and use Parrish Hill Road to get to the business, which is a one-way street. So there's a lot of traffic problems that I don't think has been taken into consideration. You've got a really hard hairpin left-hand turn on Parrish Hill from the highway. And the parking lot's right at the end of my driveway. So I feel like, you know, that with the poop dumpster at the end of the driveway and everything is gonna be a huge nuisance with the traffic. I also have some concerns about the drinking water. Everybody in our neighborhood is on septic and well water. I don't know what the... I don't know what the water situation is at your current location. If that's septic as well or if that's a public sewer. But I think, I know that before it was a real estate office. I know the water usage of real estate offices is pretty low. I'm a Realtor myself. And the impact of a real estate office is super low. People are almost never there. With the baths, the self-washing stations, I'm just not sure if replacing the septic system with what was there before, if it's gonna be able to handle the capacity of water. I don't know whether... I don't know how closely the Board of Health looked into the flow rate. Flow rate for that system is only 200 gallons of water a day. Does anybody know what a dog grooming facility, how much water it creates?
That's up to the Board of Health.
All right. Well, my well is about 50 yards downhill from that leach field. So I have some concerns about that. And then finally, just the impact it's gonna have to the property values. As most people in this room probably know, 16 Parrish Hill Road is a really rundown. We've liked the house for many years. My wife and I just bought it earlier this year. It had no roof. It had no functional plumbing, no functional heating system. We put all the money that we have into this house because our dream was to fix up a historic home in a nice, quiet town, improve it over time. And before buying the house, I did my due diligence and I researched the town bylaws. I found that that and the building across the street were in the Village Center Zone, which I saw had the strictest bylaws. And I was like, all right, I don't have to worry about any kind of like high-impact business coming up. My investment would be protected long-term from something like that and there's an upside potential. So I, you know, I feel okay about putting tens of thousands of dollars in this house right off the bat to make it livable. Man, just bringing that highway traffic right to my front door, it's just gonna have like a devastating impact on the potential of that property value and the other property values in the area. Whereas I feel like what I'm trying to do at 16 Parrish Hill is bring that house back to life and while I'm at it, really invest in the community and the neighborhood as well, improving property values of all my neighbors. So I'm gonna ask, you know, in consideration of bylaws, whose purpose is to protect property values and land value and look out for the inhabitants of the town, that you please consider not granting a special new permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
So it's in the historic district?
Is that...
Is 16 Parrish Hill considered in the historic district?
Yes.
It is? That's not it?
No, I'm talking historic district. I'm not talking...
Bill, listen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Can I just clarify? We're not gonna board dogs. I have no interest in boarding dogs on the property. And I honestly, I have a dumpster at my house that I bring everything home to now. I don't even have a dumpster at the property where I am.
Yeah, there's no dumpster gonna be there.
Yeah.
You are?
JR.
And when we did the septic system, we put it in before we bought the building. The Board of Health was in contact with everything and they knew exactly what I was doing there, how much water usage I would need, and they approved the whole system.
I can speak to the line.
Sure, go ahead.
So she grooms anywhere between 8 and 12 dogs. Every dog is under a gallon to bathe. She has a 75 gallon per day requirement. She won't even use a third of that per day with her business house running down. So she has up to 200 gallons. If she uses 20 a day, that would be, I mean, astronomical, high end. Once again, no dumpster's gonna be there. Everything's inside. She brings all her trash, only she does now. We have a dumpster at our home that... That's where it is. Concerning the parking spots, what Harry De Service did on the parking, we took into account traffic carriage. I'm sure he knows, you know, a big engineer in our, you know, surrounding town. And the parking is all on concrete, not on grass. When the new septic was put in, we spent a little bit more money for piping to where if there was gonna be any additional parking spaces needed, we could make a grout on top because of the piping that we put in underground.
And it was advertised as having 12 parking spaces. Brooks and Nealon used to have more. but the, when they did the site plan, they gave us just eight. But it was, when it was listed, it was advertised as having 12, so back in the day when they owned it, they, they had 12 parking spaces there.
I mean, there's only three parking spaces anyway now. So like I said, I look up the, there's three parking spaces. I've got ponos, a lot of still grass.
Well, that's incorrect. We can look up the site plan. How many are, I mean, I could line them.
And just for reference, a typical shower is 17 gallons...
Excuse me? You are?
Iris Stecca.
Okay.
I'm wearing a hat, too. A typical shower is 17 gallons of water. So, you might have to cut it out.
Okay, just, just to, just to clarify something. We're talking about water and that's out of our purview. We're, we're strictly with the site plan. When we get a, when we get a proposal of this, we distribute it to the department heads and ask for input. And the jur, the jurisdiction which you're referring to is Board of Health, and they took no issue with it. The, there's standards with setbacks for wells and septic systems that, that are required 100 feet between a well and a septic system. And there's, there's other things that they, they take into consideration, and they took no issue with it, so with, without any feedback from them, and that, in that sense, it's, it's out of our purview. So it's, we're not, we're not the experts in, in that.
Another neighbor just walked in as well. What's that? Said another neighbor just walked in. Oh, yes.
Well, would you, would you sign in, please, and then identify yourself? Please.
And the neighbor said, couldn't you here sign the other paper?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying, I'm trying to digest this and carry the meeting here.
Yeah, I got down to leave a little with the septic issue, but I do want to kind of zoom out again and say that that's just one of many issues. You know, it still doesn't change the concerns that I have around traffic. Spent a lot of time thinking about it. That was even before I moved. I assumed it would be a Monday through Friday night at 5, now it's Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6. That is very, that is quite literally, that parking lot is quite literally at the very end of my driveway, right on my front door. Anytime, almost nobody uses that street right now. It's effectively like a private driveway for the meisters. I mean, like, it's not really, it's a very narrow one-way road and once again, I, I really do feel that that's, that's what the parking lot is, so whether people are coming in from 202 or whether they're trying to make that hard left-hand turn into Parrish Hill Road, the fact remains that that parking lot and all of that traffic is going to be on Parrish Hill Road.
But why would they be making a hard left off of 202 onto Parrish Hill Road when they can turn onto the Goldsmith's property at their building?
Well, like I said, the site plan on the left boundary of the parcel, it's indicated as all being pavement, but it's not actually all pavement right now. There's a lot, there's a little bit of a steep slope with some grass, there's a large tree there. So, if you imagine 50% of that is actually not pavement right now, it becomes a much tighter squeeze.
But they, they have access off of Route 202 to their building.
Yeah, I don't think you understand what I'm saying. The, the place where they want to put the parking spots would block that access. If somebody was parked in that handicap parking spot, somebody wanted to come off 202 and then drive through the parking and the bath, the guy would come up and show you.
Access right here.
Yeah, so this whole area...
Here's the handicap.
Right, this whole area right here is indicated as pavement, but in reality, like, this whole half is not pavement. It's grass right now. There's trees like a little further over there, so I think it's going to be a tighter squeeze. If someone's parked there, they're going to have to come out into the street. And right, even if they do come in from 202, they're going to have to come into the street to then get back into the parking lot. My driveway is right here.
It's a public way.
All right, I'm, I'm not going to really be able to get in there in my driveway. The fact remains that it's a village center zone, and I think that, I think an escape was made by the rising service. She says she's not willing to stay there, but she's also saying that she's going to keep cats there overnight and that dogs are going to be given the bathroom and be fed and bathed and they're all the same thing that happened to the boarding animals.
I won't be feeding any dogs there, just for...
All right, dress us, please. I didn't catch what you said.
I just said I won't, I'm not going to be feeding any dogs there. I'm not, dogs aren't going to be fed there, they're not going to be housed there overnight. They're just going to come in for their grooming, maybe have to stay for the day if somebody's working, and then go home.
So it's not a daycare, a, a, an animal daycare?
Well, when I say daycare, like a doggy daycare, I mean like during the day, like where the dogs come and stay for the day, they get the bath, but I'm not feeding them any food. Like, they're fed before they come, their owners drop them off. Right now, we have people, some people keep their dogs there for two hours, some people keep their dogs there for five hours, depending on their work schedule.
And there's, there's some people that would drop them off on their way to work and pick them up on their way.
Correct, right, right. But I'm not keeping them there overnight. I'm not feeding them any food.
Now, the, so the service is going to be confined to inside the building?
Correct. I'm not putting up any fences outside. I mean, obviously, the dogs are going to have to walk in the building, walk out of the building, you know. But we're not putting any fences. There aren't going to be dog loose outside anywhere or anything like that.
So, so someone drops their, their, their pet off at 8 o'clock in the morning. They're not going to pick it up until they come home at 6. You service the dog, you know, bathe it, whatever, whatever you're doing with the pet. Do you have a, in, on the inside, you have a place where you hold them, like a small kennel or something?
Yes, yeah, we have crates.
So there's no reason to bring the dogs outside to use the bathroom or anything like that?
Well, if they have to pee, we'd have to bring them outside, but they're not eating any food or anything like that. I mean, generally, the dogs go to the bathroom before they come in. But yes, if we gave a dog water at noon time, we'd have to take him for a walk around 3 or something like that for them to go pee.
So no outside kennels or runs?
No, I'm not putting any fences up. I'm not putting any kennels up, any dog ties, no.
Ken, when somebody drops a dog off for grooming, typically, they're not at your place for very long. Is that correct?
Not usually. Only, there's a quick drop-off and pickup. Sometimes we have people stay if they're getting like their nails trimmed or if it's just a cat that's getting a couple of mats removed, then they'll stay. But we do try to stagger people just so that there's not, I mean, we wouldn't be able to take care of five customers at one time. So normally, it's a drop-off, they stay for two to three hours, and then they go home, is the typical customer. But then we do have a few that will work 9 to 5 and they, they can't get back to pick them up at lunchtime.
Right, so, so for the dogs that are going to be there for a period of time, that have to be taken outside so they can relieve themselves?
At some point.
Who would be doing that?
Myself. We wouldn't have anyone hired to do that or anything like that.
So it wouldn't be the, 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 the customer?
No, well, when they come, usually they walk their dog when they first get there before they bring them in.
So, what area have you designated for that? Because we certainly want to make sure it's away from the well. Well, we know where the well is, but where's the designated area that you'd be, you're going to have to designate an area?
Okay, I can. I can like mark, I just didn't want to put, I wanted to keep the outside of the building the same, like I told you guys from the start.
No, I'm not asking you to fence it in.
I was going to put like any strings up or anything like that.
Where are you going to walk the dogs so that they...
I mean, I guess I can put a sign up, like, please walk your dogs here or something like that. That's what we do over there. We generally have like a sign, you know, that says, please, please walk your pets here.
Right.
And then where, if people are walking their pets?
No, 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 just, just take... All questions are addressed to the board, not to the applicant.
Yeah, let us, let us drill down on some of this. So, so you, you can designate an area?
Yes.
On the plan that would be, wouldn't be fenced in or anything like that? At, at this point, I don't think the board's looking for that. Just to designate in an area where that would take place, that it wouldn't interfere with your well or the abutters' wells?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll, back, back to you folks.
Okay, um, there's a drain, a drain here that, um, septic wells in the woods a little bit, but all the water drains into this drain.
Surface drain.
Surface drain. Um, so today I was looking at, and so we're on a water drain, but all the water from around here drains into this drain, runs into our property.
The drain runs into your property?
My property, Maria's property, people down at Paul's property. But there aren't a lot of places where you can walk dogs.
Oh, you're talking about the, oh, you're talking about the catch basin in the street, which...
It's not in the street, it's on the, on the ground.
It's actually in lawn area. It is.
Okay.
But it must rain across the street.
Can I come up?
Please, you can come up, sure.
So, the septic is here. This is the drain basin, sorry, and the well is up here. No, no, right, right. So there's really nowhere to walk the dog. At least it's someone else's business, like, right up here. So, there's not a lot of area we can do that, and like I said, all the water...
Well, they could do it over the leach area, which would make sense because it's supposed to put a well.
Yeah, I know, yeah, it's too bad.
Actually, that drain isn't even on their property. Here's the property line.
Well, it's on a train that's...
It's got to be an old town drain.
It's not, I find hard to believe it's not in the road.
It isn't.
Where does the road, how does it?
Edge of pavement. It's this one right here.
Edge of pavement, going this way?
Yeah, edge of pavement, edge of pavement.
Got you. So the leach field's here anyway, that could, right?
Right, which, the, I don't know what the Board of Health did on this. I don't, I don't know. I have nothing to do with this.
Septic comes up here, leach field's here. Everything's going this direction, I'm assuming.
Yeah, contours.
Yeah, 10296. Wonder where they went, 10292. Is there any more comment from the, from the public?
Yeah, I don't have much more comments, I guess. I, you know, tried to outline some, in fact, it seems like, I, the, the main concern that I have is how the decision was come to, to call this a services use as opposed to some of the other uses in the use table that seem to describe this better. It's a, it's like a business that's not specifically already in the use table, so it seems like we've been kind of looking and trying to determine our, what exactly is going to be happening here, all to the end of saying, all right, well, which category should we drop this into? Is it going to be a place of boarding animals or is it going to be a services? Which, I don't really know why. I guess because you're providing a service, but that one is so open and vague. My concern is the person who lives right across the street is leaving it so open and invade, like, there's just no way, once the permit's granted, to really enforce any of these things.
Okay, so let, let me just clarify that. If, if the board approves it, it typically approves with conditions. And in light of what we've heard tonight, the board may or may not approve it with certain conditions, such as all activity must happen inside. Parking, I'm sure the board's going to say, no park, no street parking, only use available parking spa, you know, things along those natures. There are conditions that are placed on, on these permits, and, and then it's up to the code enforcement officer to, to enforce it, if the board chooses to go that route. So there, there are, the purpose of the hearing is to listen to everybody's concerns and then to, then to vote to whether, and if it is approved, like I said, we'll, we'll instate, re, instate some conditions that'll hopefully address concerns. The use, the way it was presented to us is, it's, it's a service. The, the bylaws may be, may be a little vague in some areas. It's, you know, it, it's hard to nail everything down through the bylaws. There's always circumstances that come up and they're not always all covered specifically for every, every, every possible use. So that's why there's a board here. We, we try to review it fairly for both the, the applicant and the, the, you know, the neighbors, the abutters. Are there, again, are there any more questions from the, from the audience?
I guess I'll just say that, um, some conditions, at the very least, that I would ask you to make would be to maybe limit the business hours. I think that, you know, I spoke, one of the people I spoke to before moving to the town was the president of the Preservation Society about the establishment of the village center zone and why that zone was established in the first place, um, which was to kind of preserve the historic character of the town. And, you know, part of that was certain soft businesses, as she called them, would, would be okay. For example, a pharmacy in the center of town and like the sleepy real estate office that had been there beforehand. I do think that a, a business that's running, you know, 8 to 6, Monday through Saturday, with pretty continuous traffic throughout the day in a, um, what's the word used? In sort of a scattered, that's just like a lot of traffic for what, when I moved, when I bought the house, I thought was going to be kind of a quiet block. I knew I was close to the highway, but I also saw that that building was in the village center zone. I'd never imagined that I would be at a public hearing trying to, you know, keep a really high-traffic, busy business from going up very across the street from my house. And, and just, I guess to please consider, you know, the impact that it's going to have to the property values because I made a pretty big financial decision with that house, and I'm just disappointed to be here.
I agree with on the hours as well.
Okay. Any other comment that, that's, that hasn't already been addressed from the public? Okay. Does the board have any further discussion along with the comment that the public's brought to our attention?
Should we ask the applicant if maybe she would consider?
Yeah, we, when we, we can get to that, that phase of the hearing, once we close, close out the, the public comment.
I was just wondering. Some people are saying there's three parking spaces, then there's seven or eight. Are they all designated now or is it just sort of...
Well, here's what the plan shows.
But then, some of the public were saying there was only three spaces. Are there going to be new spaces?
There's clearly two, three, four, five, six, seven, including me. That might be eight. That is eight.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public input portion of this meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the public input of this public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So what I would like, what I would like to do is I'd like to go out and visit the site for two purposes. One, to see if... One, to see if access from 202 to the back of this, this, uh, parking lot is accessible. The other would be to see where, where a good spot to designate near the septic system for bringing the pets out to relieve themselves. I under, I understand, I understand that being open on a Saturday is probably important because that's when people have time to...
It's my busiest day to be on the street.
So, what kind of... What were, you said eight to, eight to six, Monday through Saturday?
Yeah, I mean, we could do nine to five Saturday, because people usually don't work. And just do eight to six Monday through Friday.
And about how many, I guess, how many dogs does she have a day, or?
Sure.
So how many dogs about do you have a day that you groom?
It really depends, honestly, like, obviously, around holiday time, sometimes we're busier, um, school vacations, sometimes because people aren't working. Um, right now, it's pretty quiet because it's winter and not a lot of people are getting their dog shed. So it's really varies, but I would say, on average, we do, like, eight to maybe twelve, and that's including cats...
Right.
...a day. So it's not all dogs. We, we do a lot of cats, a lot of groomers around here won't groom cats, so we, I would say almost forty percent of our business is cats.
Okay. So, but then, in terms of dogs, maybe six dogs a day?
Yeah, I'd say maybe eight of them are dogs and four of them are cats.
Thanks. And in terms of those eight dogs, maybe half of those people are only leaving them two or three hours?
Right, majority just leave, a lot of people don't like leaving their pets, so it's usually two to three hours to get them groomed and get them home. But we do have the occasional people that work and can't get back, or, um, have babies that nap in the afternoon and they have to wait till the babies wake up, so... And right now, we usually are out of the shop by four, four-thirty. I was just saying till five, because I don't wanna be dishonest, and if someone comes to pick up their dog late and we're there till five, I don't want anybody to be upset saying, "Hey, you said you were only gonna be open till four or four-thirty."
Right.
But we're not usually there until five. I was just trying to give the, the customers that opportunity.
Flexibility.
I don't know if anybody else wants to visit the site, but I certainly wanna do before I make a final decision on this.
Yeah.
I, I definitely wanna take a look at this area over here for the, the walking area, and then I wanna make sure, or see what type of capacity you have here to enter, from the 202 side, to, to swing around into, uh, the parking spaces you have allotted on the back. Does anybody have any other comment on this right now? Not at this point in time. Myself. You may wanna take this with you. So I, I, I think what we'll, what I'm gonna propose is we continue the hearing. And then, um, at that point, after we review, or I review, the, the site a little bit, um, given the feedback we've gotten from the abutters, I think at that point, um, we could discuss hours of operation, any other conditions, you know, those sort of things. I suppose we could, we could, we could discuss something out tonight, too. What do you, what do you, what do you feel about conditions for hours of operation, off-street parking? Oh, I, I would agree that there should not be, um, on-street parking. On-street parking? What did I say, off-street? Yeah, off-street. Um, the hours, I understand what the abutters are saying, I also understand, small business person, um... Here, here's my take on it. Whether it was a, a doggy daycare or a real estate office with the same amount of traffic, what's, if everything's being confined to inside, you know, what diff, if it, if there's no impact outside the building, what difference does it make on the hours?
Mm-hmm. And I'm gonna be honest, just on my take on it, I think the hours during eight to six, I don't think, during the week, I don't feel is unrealistic. I think those are very fair hours. I don't think she's asking to be there till ten o'clock at night and open at five in the morning.
Those, you know, I, those are my concerns, so I, I would, right now, I would entertain a vote to... Hang on a second. When's our next, when's our next public, or our next meeting? Next meeting, that's what I'm looking at. The, uh, the second Monday of February, which would be the thirteenth. Okay, let me ask the applicant, is there, is, if we reconvene on the thirteenth, does that cause any hardship?
Oh, sorry, no. I mean, I'd just like to say, I grew, I was born in this town and I grew up here, like, I in no way wanna impact this town poorly. You know, that's why I said, right from the get-go, I wanna keep the outside of the building the same, I don't wanna change anything. My grandparents used to use that insurance company, I was in that building when I was this big. I have no, I wanted to no harm to any neighbors, anyone in town or anything. I'm actually trying to make the town better and give people the services that I've learned that they needed over the last fifteen years.
How many employees do you have? Like, you, it's yourself would have a car, then maybe one or two people?
Correct. Yeah, it'd be all, ours would all, we, all alternate, so, um, on weekends, usually, there's two of us on Saturday, sometimes there's three, it really depends on the schedule, but usually two, you know, to three people at a time.
And then you'd have four additional spaces for...
Right.
...for the president.
Right.
That's basically what we're looking at, right, just more of the parking?
You've got more parking here than you do where you're at, correct?
Yeah, definitely.
I don't have a first ration right now.
Yeah.
So you can fit that in.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to continue. I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing until Monday, February thirteenth, at five fifteen P.M. Here.
I'll, I can second that.
We have a second? Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the, the meeting will be at, on February thirteenth? February thirteenth. Five fifteen. Alright. Let's, uh, let's close this hearing for, until then.
I have one question. Are we making a, a site, a site just with you? Are we making a site, is it tied with you now?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would like to have, have you there when, when I do that.
Yeah, perfect. So, are we making a tie now, or?
Yeah, we can do that, sure.
May I just say one more thing?
Well, the, the public...
It's, it's not about the public hearing, it's just about the correspondence moving forward.
Sure.
Um, so, a thing I mentioned before, I think we had any of the public notices in the mail, um, called, they sent a sentence certified mail, and they gotta receive that, I would receive and sign for it, but I never have to sign, I don't know what...
We'll look into that, but it, it's irrelevant, it's irrelevant because you did get the notice, you are here tonight, and this is the first discussion we've had since the hearing, so I apologize for that, but... If you're wonder, if you're wondering if there's gonna be further communication from us to the public, other than what we just said this evening, continuing the public hearing to February thirteenth, there will not be any, anything in writing.
Okay.
Is that what you were wondering?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was, like, on to this, or whatever was going on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. When are you gonna go meet? Any days better for you folks than, than not?
Whatever's good for you.
Thursday's probably my best day this week.
Sure.
What time is it?
Say, ten o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, see you there.
So it's Thursday, the twenty-sixth? Well, hang, hang on a second, we're just... So, if we're gonna meet, we have to post it. Oh, but if, but if only two go, it's not a meeting. Correct. Okay, I won't be there. I know the site.
Are you sure?
Yes. If you'd like to see it, and Jim wants to see it.
Well, if you wanna go, then I don't, I don't...
No. No. See, we, we've closed the hearing piece of it for the public. Um, there won't be any other discussions other than looking for potential places, um, there won't be any decisions made, it'll just be a, an inspection of the property. Any findings, any concerns, anything that I wanna bring back to the board will be done the night of our hearing, so that everybody hears the same thing. But, again, my concern is access from 202 and where there may be a, a best place to, not that I would be making the decision, but so I have a better feel for, um, where they would be walking, where they're gonna propose walking the dogs. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Alright, that's it. Good evening all, thank you for coming. Yeah, thank you.